Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Call to order the March eleventh meeting of the Fountain County Council. Does everybody look over the minutes from the previous meeting? Does everybody have it all ready to everyone?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second, Jeff. All in favor? Foro. Report of questions that submitted. Everybody have a look at those? Jim? Can I get a second?
Sure.
Tom will start. A vote?
Aye.
Foro. Review and acknowledge treasurer's bank written zillion mentally comparison needs report. Did everyone have a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Can I get a motion? Jeff?
Jeff, sir.
Jim, a second. Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Foro. Review and acknowledge.
Dudley is on Zoom. He just got on. Yeah, he just got one.
Okay.
Okay. So if he votes, we'll have to do a roll call vote.
Okay. Review and acknowledge clerk's monthly report for January twenty twenty four. Does everyone have a chance to look at those? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'm in.
Tom, in a second. Jeff? And a vote?
Aye.
Then we have to do a roll call.
He's on, but he's. He's in the. Nothing happened.
Foro. We will open the hearing for additional appropriations at nine oh twenty eight a minute.
What's this, what it's all about, the thirty eight thousand, what it's going for, machines and equipment?
We lease the recycle, lease a new truck. There are other ones. They have two that they use continuously and every year ends are going out. So we leased a new truck. And that is for one year lease payment plus they put a, I call a dump bed on it where I draw like with the, so that's for that expense. It wasn't included in our budget for twenty twenty four. So we had to give the last for an additional. We have the funds for it. It's just, it wasn't part of the budget.
Any other public comment? Does it have a comment that came to this question then? Uh, yes, I believe so. Yes.
Well, we can't afford a comment that doesn't bring that into the meeting.
Um, if we have time, yes. Paper then, we will close the at nine oh four. Can I get a motion on the resolution twenty twenty four dash two for the amount of thirty eight thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and ninety six cents for machine and equipment?
But. Sorry. Should I put them up? Spray?
Yeah.
Don't know if you can see me or hear me.
We can, we can see you on the little one, not on the big one, but we can hear you. Oh, you're up there now.
Okay. Sorry, I tried to get on my laptop and I couldn't, so I'm on my phone.
Okay, we're getting ready. We're getting ready to vote on the additional.
Okay.
For solid waste.
That's for the solid waste truck, right?
Yes, correct.
Can I get a motion for the additional appropriation?
Senator, I'm on that committee. I'm looking.
In a second. Jim? Any roll call vote? Jeff?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Dudley?
Aye.
Aye, five oh. Uh, transfers. Transferring for the health department from housekeeping to liability to under ten dollars. Let me stop for a second. Um, Colleen and I talked about this and if you're in favor, we thought we would list all these and vote all these. Are you opposed to that? Dudley, are you opposed to that?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
We talked to Colleen prior to the meeting and we thought it might be a good idea to list all of the transfers, but vote one time on all transfers.
Okay. Yep, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Health department from housekeeping to liability to under ten dollars. Um, the county general ambulance from vacation and sick to overtime, thirty thousand dollars. From MBH salt to lease for enterprise, four thousand, six hundred and twenty nine dollars. Can I get a motion?
Yeah.
Jeff? Can I get a second? Tom?
Jim. I voted Jim.
So a second, Tom. Who's this?
Jim.
Jim, okay. Guys are confusing me.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jim?
Jim, aye.
Aye.
And aye, so that's by oh. Sheriff's retirement. As per the greedy and keen, we are underfunded in the sheriff's retirement, the amount of twenty eight thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars for twenty twenty four. They have also sent us a fee statement, you invoice, and the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and eleven.
Colleen, you want to elaborate? We got a, a letter from a key ingredient that we were underfunded. We should catch that up by that amount. And then plus there was a fee statement for analysis they did on the account, I guess, is what you call it. And there's no money in the sheriff pension fund to other than, I'm hoping we have enough in money to when we send the payment for retirement this year. Cause we appropriated seventy five hundred, but there is no funds and sheriff pensions to pay for that. Yeah, so it's gonna have to come out of another fund, which I assume would be county general somewhere.
Or you also can talk about the council.
We could take it out of the council fund to get it paid. Or so we get the additional and put it back. But that's up to you guys. How do you want to do it? We can take it out of the capital. I would like to put it in a a line item specific for that new side of transfer to that line item, but. No, just approval to pay it. And if we have to get an additional, we will, I guess, I mean.
Do we want to make a motion? Do we want to do that? We're going to.
Yeah, it has to be paid.
Yeah. Has to be paid.
Any thoughts, Dudley?
Well, I thought the sheriff's department was checking into that twelve thousand dollar fee. The twenty eight thousand is what we do have to pay for their fund. And my suggestion is we take it out of county general. And but then we'd have to do an additional. Is that correct, Colleen?
Yes, unless you take it out of council's budget.
Well, then let's take it out. I mean, I'm okay with taking it out of the council budget. And um, that way you don't have to pay to do an additional.
Okay, I've got one to go to the paper that I'm going to talk about here pretty soon. So if that makes a difference.
Um, no, I mean, I'm okay with, if everybody's okay with taking it out of the um, uh, council budget, I'm okay with, with that. I prefer just the twenty eight thousand until we get clarification on that twelve thousand dollar bill.
Okay.
You probably need a motion.
Can I get a motion to approve that?
The twenty eight.
The twenty eight nine five nine.
Right.
County.
That will finish the board.
Right.
Jim, love you.
Make a motion, Jim.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Second?
You want a second?
Yeah.
Roll call vote?
Uh, excuse me.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jim, aye. Tom?
Aye.
Dudley?
Aye.
And myself, aye, that's by oh. And already grant childcare. So if you remember right, we approved the twenty three nine fifty last year. For some reason, nothing was ever drawn off of it, so went back into county general. So now they have come calling for the twenty three nine fifty. So we have to make a motion to approve. I assume to prove it again.
Yes.
So that'll have to be additional. Yes. And just so you know, eight of the seats are going to cap kids, three and fourteen of the seats are going to the Attic Learning Center. That's the twenty two seats. And how many? We'll get a thousand first. And how many is going to Attic? Oh, yes, okay, young years. So I did forward an email to Colleen.
I forwarded it to Yana's name.
Okay.
Who would this, what did you say first?
Eight.
Eight.
Cap is three. It must be more.
We just couldn't get anybody to submit, you know, product to IDC and I think that's some of the delay as well. Plus, we had to wait on a ready reason, you know, to make a decision as well.
Right. We'll have to do an additional preparation on that. So Colleen's going to get everything ready for our April meeting. So we'll, we'll do that in April. Let's take public comment. And do you know anything else?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to, you know, the party number with Maple Corner.
We're in the process right now of um, getting all of our ducks in a row with different agencies that we're going to be working with for the renovation for that. So they're working on the plans and the cost analysis for that. And I'm ready to.
Well, we have a contract that we've been negotiating. I think this originally we had whole projects and for a BOT. So we had a highway building pulled out of that process and it took time for the attorneys to work on paperwork. So we're ready. Our next step is when we sign the contract, hopefully next week. Um, we can get the architect to finish the schematics because I've been waiting a year. No work has been done on schematics. And there's like three different phases with the architect and that's one of these being completed. We can't do four one until that stuff is done. So that is our next step.
So you have like a budget that you're working with or money that you're on?
We have set aside some ARCA funds, the county receiving. We've designated some of those funds, the council and commissioners uh, worked together on what we want to see the funds go to. So some went to Kama, some went to Hills, but also some went to Attic, about half of the, so there's like one point three million dollars that's set aside to get started with the process of the annex.
Is that where you're going to be done, just work on the big one?
I mean, that's, that's the funds that we have available. After that was the presented, we have a comprehensive financial plan that Baker Tilling is working on. And they provided the figures for each, all three of those projects, the courthouse, the highway building, and the annex of getting bonds. And so there's some figures that I think we need to revisit when they were billing to hand the highway department to make sure those um, totals are correct. I'm not thinking they are, but we still need to do some discussion on that.
So how many of the dollars went for Maple Corner, maybe taxpayers, local, local dollars?
That's dependent on how we want to proceed because it could be. They may want, maybe suggest if you do half lift, local income tax, and then have raised property taxes, um, that just isn't that likely.
So you're going to raise taxes to pay for Maple Corner renovation? Is that what you're saying?
If we do a lot, yes.
Okay. So I, I have just to point something out. I look like I all remember from back in twenty twenty two. Um, there was an article that was published, uh, somewhere in the ad. It says historic Covington restaurant has become Fountain County's office. So this was how this was presented to the public. That Attic was going to use local money, or not Attic, sorry, Fountain County is going to use local money to purchase Maple Corner at four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, which that would be done, right? And then they were going to use American Rescue Plan funds for the rest of the money for renovation. So they were estimating that at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Basically, the argument was made that that, the only dollars are going to be used for local, local taxes for Maple Corner, was that four hundred and twenty five thousand. So as we're like, I guess, discussing this and kind of working through it, I just don't want people to forget that that's what the residents of Fountain County were, were promised or were under the impression of when Maple Corner was introduced as an annex. So it worries me that we might be getting into pulling more money from the taxpayers or from the budget for this project than was initially proposed. They also mentioned in this article that the reason Maple Corner was purchased was because it was going to cost two point six million to add ten thousand square feet to the area. And they decided that was too much money. And that we were being responsible by giving it this way because it's only going to cost local people four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So I'm going to leave this article for you guys because this has quotes in it from, from Tim basically saying that could be counting.
Where'd you get your article?
Um, there's a, there's a link down here, um, to the website that it was on. It says says Attic editor at gmail, Attic editor at gmail dot com by Carla Walters is who wrote it. And basically I just Googled Maple Corner.
I think that came from the Fountain County neighbor.
Okay, so I mean, the quotes are in here from Tim Schumaker. I highlighted the big ones that I'm talking about. I just want us not to forget that when this was presented to the community, it was presented that we were not using local taxpayer dollars. So raising taxes, doing all this stuff. I just want to keep everybody on track. So if you would like this, it's got the link on the bottom. Um, so that's, that's the thing. It's all I care about. And I have one more thing.
I'd like to address, if I could, um, at some point here about that.
Yeah, I'm not, not article. I only copied and pasted what I was going to talk about. So to see the complete article, you'll need to look at that link, but it's all. Go ahead, Dudley.
Okay, so to, to address what you brought up, you are exactly right. When we were first approached about building a new nine one one uh, emergency management building, a, a plan was brought to us for two point one million dollars. One of the commissioners said and maybe more told us that they thought that was way too much money. And I have copy of the email, the plan to buy Maple Corner and to spend up to one million dollars to renovate it. And that's what was determined by the council. We thought that was the best plan instead of building. And now we're at six point one or six point two million. And I've talked to all the council members. And uh, we think that's way out of line. We do not want to raise taxes on the taxpayers. And uh, there even been some council members that said maybe we should put Maple Corner up for sale. Because that's way too much money to put on to the taxpayers after we told them it was only going to be a million dollars. So, but I think this is a discussion that needs to be done when there's all seven members present and we can discuss it further with a, a financial plan. Because I believe a majority do not want to raise any taxes on the taxpayers of Fountain County.
And then just remember that American Rescue Plan was what was supposed to cover the seven hundred and fifty thousand on top of the four hundred thousand. So you weren't supposed to take any money locally over that four hundred and twenty five or whatever the initial cost of the buildings.
Right, it, we, we saved back actually one million dollars to renovate Maple Corner. And I believe majority, that's all they want to spend is the million dollars. And not anymore. So again, I don't think there'll be any decision done today. If, if, this should probably be a decision when all seven members are present.
The other thing to keep in mind, you know, when we, when we did have the architect companies look at this, they did say that there was points. We bought it was a restaurant and it was going to be taken to a governmental building. You got different fire codes and different things that happened with it. And that's where I think there's some additional costs that I don't think any of us was aware of. You know, so when that was first mentioned, you know, the solid everything. We weren't for sure what it was going to entail on ready. Until we got architecture kind of involved and then we found out it, it's going to be expensive. Yes, we have a nice basement over there. We have, I mean, you, you could build the foundation for what we paid for that building. And it should house a lot and uh, address some of the needs right now.
Right.
And but now you've already, you know, basically worried about not having enough money in the future. Then why would we spend more money than we wanted to spend originally, what we, why don't think it would be anybody wants to spend more money? But when it's presented, this, this is what it's going to cost. And uh, after COVID, prices have like doubled or tripled. Uh, can you get more grant money? Because I mean, what was promised to you? We're trying to get whatever we can. I mean, we are trying to get whatever we can to help for that. And you know, some of the, from the auction, there's like eighty thousand dollars, eighty some thousand that was put back in the county general. So it kind of offsets that four hundred and some thousand, you know, that we paying for the building.
We, we know that for sure that there's a couple of projects where this building's we're looking for. Because of this dilapidation, that sort of thing. And uh, that's kind of been put into Baker Tilling's plan. Two of them are this courthouse. And one is the other is hiding. Now with that being said, they're ancient and old and they haven't been kept up very well. Highway departments into the safety issue. So there's still maybe an impact on taxes. But it's, it's almost like it has to be done. So I just want to make it work. There, there are just buildings that really need attention.
Well, I just wanted to remind everyone, one of the nationally presented to the resident of Fountain.
Right.
Fountain Corner. And what, we even.
You're saying nasty city.
I'm talking about Maple Corner. I do have a question about the courthouse.
Yeah.
I would like to, uh, I guess see a stove worker or something. Like what are, what are you guys, what are people bidding on? We, we don't, we don't, we don't really know right now, but Bryn has been working on that. Yeah. So who, so I would need to just ask, but I would like to see like, whatever you're getting the contractor that said this is what we need to do to the courthouse. From, I mean, like the place.
Well, if I was running after sure, it came and he went to each office and said the beach department head, they assess the, from the roof to the basement.
You guys knew that report they had. I'll get it.
I can see.
Right, I'm not sure that we even have a copy of it yet because it's still.
They didn't present us with a master plan that.
Yeah, it's a master plan, but.
I did ask him for his, but it's a professional opinion, you know, about putting a new roof on here before we renovate. And that was advised, no, don't do that because, and he gave reasons it's going to be more costly if we would just put a new roof on. Because you're going to have to, then you're going to mess up the warranty and everything when they come in here and start renovating. So it says, just wait. If we can get the annex done, move people out of here to the annex, or if they can work from home, that's kind of plain. So I would be glad to have, you know, sit down and talk with you, you know, give you as much information that I can, but.
I think that.
We're still in negotiations, might have any to proceed.
I think the community doesn't understand that we are in an unfortunate situation with the commissioners and the council. Some of the council members have been on the council for several years. These buildings have been neglected for probably at least fifteen plus years. And now it's all come to head at the same time. We've got cracks in the floor of this courthouse. They're at least four inches wide. It's become a hazard here. The nine one one is in a room this big and that's it. It's not even this big.
For twelve hours.
For twelve hours at a time.
I'm not saying.
So I know, I know what you're saying. You're.
I can, well, it's just what you guys are trying to fix.
Right.
I want to see, I just want, anybody who gets an estimate on a, on a repair, like even on a house, like they want to renovate a house. The contractor comes in and says, here's the thing that we're going to fix and here's what I'm estimating the cost.
I just looked at lists for the county C that says here are all the things in the courthouse that we're going to fix. Not just, I keep hearing different numbers, like sixteen million or whatever it's going to cost to repair the courthouse.
And we haven't got, exactly, we haven't got the state of our system. Going to the BOT process, we know that that price can succeed. There cannot be an ancient quarter. And so that was the reason we're going through the BOT process for the courthouse and the annex. Anyway, we're going to vet it out. I mean, it's, it's still, they're still going to receive bids on the BOT process, but it's a guaranteed maximum price.
So if you're going to get bid, then there's got to be something. We're still waiting on it.
We, we're not there yet. The, the architecture companies are anticipating what the maximum price is going to be. And those were the figures that Tim shared the other night then had.
What are they based on?
They have their formulas. I don't know. But we haven't gotten to the point where we have companies coming in bidding their gross maximum price.
But they have come in here, actually looked at the courthouse and it's like the best.
Did I see that before?
Yeah.
What do I have to talk to to get that?
Our contractor is the company that did that. They do historical buildings around the state of Indiana. So where do I get that report?
You know, man, if I'm in. What Bryn is talking about is, is tough for us to give you a report today. That's what you're wanting. But we have, in the book there, people have come to the courthouse. They've gone through the county garage. They have gone through the annex. And they have made drawings, yes. And we have consulting trades, yes. But to come by, and some of those plans may have to be tweaked. Some of these plans may not even be done now. But what we had to do, we had to find out where we were. From consulting fees, from diagrams, and what we'd like to do for the county as far as each one of these projects. Each one of those may have to be tweaked a little bit. Yes, there's some money there. And yes, there's plans. So through this court out, we've been cosmetics. We looked at the, we looked at the heating, we looked at the plumbing. This is all things that may have to be tweaked. Or may have to be decided. We're not quite there yet. And that's what Bryn is saying. And through all these things, right now, Baker's Tilling. I've just got another report about fees when we are as a county. How much money we're going to be able to spend. Yes, we have these projects. Yes, there's a fee out there. That fee, that project may have to be tweaked.
I know. I didn't leave the money out there right now. I just want to know what the, what changes were made in the courthouse.
Well, right now we have the people going through here. And they have looked at us. These are the things that they suggested that we do.
And what are those things?
Those things, maybe, how about these walls? Let's redo the wall. If there's holes in the walls, if there's windows, someone's, if there's a wall, those are the things that we grab.
That's what I would see. The walls are crumbling. There's that, that's.
That's what I would see, walls are crumbling, there's asbestos, brat around all kinds.
Do you have a stowaway work or not? That's a question. Do you have a stowaway work document or not?
We would not, that's, yeah, that's.
Okay, that that's the answer. That's the answer then.
I know, that's why I'm saying, I'm leaving the schematics finished.
And when do you expect to have a stowaway?
I have, we have signed a contract on Monday, within four weeks, they should have the schematics that they've got a timeline.
One month from now, you should have a stowaway work document.
I don't know that we'll have everything that they have. I would have to look at that contract to see, but there isn't timeline for each designed process.
Right.
But we have to get your schematics yet, we're we're not there, I've been waiting a year to get that finished. Basically, you've got crumbling walls, holding walls, whatever, you're doing things. Where are you guys getting that information from these companies that did the assessment? And why did, why did I, I just wanna.
I don't know that they really bore us crap on it, if you're wanting a typed out report, is that what you're wanting from these companies?
Well, what do you get from them?
I get a meeting with them one on one.
And they just verbally tell you what's wrong?
No, they've been, they have given us a master plan of the commissioners and maybe probably two of the council members. That have been asked to be on this committee. So we've been in discussion with these companies of how how bad the buildings are. And what they're suggesting that we do, and so we're trying to work out.
We're trying to just find whether it's reasonable or not, we just want to know if it's still.
Okay. And we haven't got that for you, I mean, we're we're working on that. But I gotta get a commitment from the council to move forward, we signed the contracts, but they got a budget.
So the council doesn't even know what's wrong with the courthouse, I'm not gonna make a commitment, but they do know.
We we do involve them in these meetings, uh expansions.
Because we, yeah, they've been here last, what, August, so it's up there.
Three, six times.
Yeah.
We have met with them.
I just. I just wanted to.
Get work.
We're not, I can assure you that nothing will be done without us knowing. Beforehand what the scope of work will be done, we will not vote on something without having a plan. To know exactly what that is, and our input will be included because, like, like Tom said, and I'll agree. This plan is ever changing because of the cost of everything, and I know you're not discussing money right now, but we're not gonna move forward until we feel comfortable knowing that. All the teeth are crossed and the eyes are dotted, because we don't wanna spend. A bunch of money and not know where it's going. And I understand your concern, and it's so different when you dig your house, because you do have, your contractor says, okay, you need new windows, you need, you know, whatever done. It's a little bit different when it comes to the government side of things, we still get that, but it's a process of several meetings.
I did find this, so the exhibit that they, the schematic design documents, four weeks from the initial meeting. Then they have a summary and estimate three weeks from that, then they have a design development, six weeks. Design of uh development, summary and estimate, three weeks, eight weeks for construction documents. Construction documents, summary and estimate, another four weeks, so there are several weeks, and that's just each project. Now, the courthouse, it's got a different timeline, schematics, eight weeks, and we're not even starting on that, but yet we need to initiate. What needs to be done so that when these other projects get completed, we can just kind of blow and get.
And the other part that's being on what you're doing with the courthouse. Like Maple Corner is the only reason you're doing that, because courthouse is so bad, gotta fall over.
It's bad and we need to move, we need to move nine one one, that was a purpose of buying that, they need to move nine one one, right, they're new meeting room because. As you have some of our meetings, we have people over here, you can't see everyone, there's not enough room. Um surprise part, I'm sure, I haven't been in. I mean, yes, we have several doors, you know, to get out, but anyway, I want to get things under time, but we do have timelines, once we get to them, there will be. We're gonna be meeting anyways, and it won't be. Open meetings like you're thinking, because they're basically like, they have building committees, correct? I'll have someone from the council, someone from the commissioner that will be meeting on a regular basis. Run away there, okay? You know, you know. Carol, she lucky, she asked the question, you didn't get her written, like, and I did it though. Can I apologize, I apologize for that, Carol, so why is she not getting ripped and I did? But anybody here is welcome to rip me, I don't care, that probably been over the half yet. And if you wanna post some view of your surgery, I'll drop my drawers and sit on your face, so.
Anyone else wanna move forward with the department heads then? Gar, we'll let you go first.
So thanks, uh. Since you guys emails reference, you know, you guys got the email on the additional. So, so I'm calling last week, uh. You know, obviously we made a change in our payroll or our salaries. Uh back in December, and that twenty twenty-four budget was already had been approved for the. Old salaries, which now have the new salaries. And Colleen and I talked then, we were gonna hope to get down closer to April, which was pretty close to there. Uh I projected the numbers out um for that, um it was, you guys need to copy the. Letter I sent you in the email.
No, I saw it.
We call in the same. Now, this number is just projected, uh this is not, you know, I think it's gonna fluctuate a little bit. But it's pretty close to what I had, what I thought when we made the approval back in December. Uh like I said, we've got twenty-one pays left, uh so fourteen pays, they'll have forty hours of overtime. Running on the rotation there now, seventeen pays, sixteen hours, which puts a total. With all that's projected, six hundred and seventy-two hours left in the year. Um now, you gotta take into consideration, a lot of these individuals have built accrued time, vacation sick. And with the way the pay is now, I'm projecting that. Individuals are gonna utilize their vacation a lot more now, because if they do take a vacation, they do get paid straight time for their time off. Whereas before, it was figured in their salaries, so it was a little different. Um so, the numbers I've come up with are on this sheet, um. The projected, right now, five hundred and two thousand one twenty-eight. So, Colleen and I talked about this a little bit, we wanted to ask your guys' thoughts of how you want to ask for this additional. We wanna do all at once, or if you wanna do this in two separate numbers. We definitely need to do a portion of it now, definitely the other portion later, Colleen, come up, both of us thought maybe it might make it a little easier. Maybe ask for it all, but we wanna ask your guys' opinion on that.
Dudley, what do you think?
Uh I I don't think we wanna do it all at once, because, one, have you filled all your positions yet, Gar?
I have filled the two, two twenty-four hour paramedic positions. Uh the ex- the extra truck, the tour truck we brought on, we did fill the two E M T spots. But the two paramedic spots are still vacant. At this point.
So. Okay, so if we do part of it now, we can transfer some of that money that's in those salaries. Into the uh overtime later in the year, so I I would do one now to get you through to maybe August and then. August or September, we'd look at for the rest of the year and and what money we can transfer. That would be my suggestion.
That was my suggestion to Colleen as well, this when we talked this week, was do you have?
Yep, sounds good.
So. From where?
We're gonna.
From where? From Joe.
Can you jump? No, we're gonna use some of the county general, yeah.
So, Colleen, do I come back Monday to the commissioners and ask for that additional, then, I know we're going backwards, but. How do we wanna, do I need to get their, obviously their approval?
You want to, because we'll bring them on this. I I can advertise.
Well, you gotta advertise with Carlos, right? So half will be two ten one.
So he's he's just.
And then he wants to tie them together if want.
So we're gonna ask for two hundred, even thousand.
I would say, yeah.
Two fifty, then we're gonna.
Yeah, that's easy, for now. Obviously, they will put it in, we'll come back in, I assume, April or.
So we're saying salaries, we're saying that extra we gave you, right?
Yeah, so. So we should, my office, we should have a a little bit better idea where we're at, you know, on the salary side of it. You know, what we got left to get to the end of the year, and if there's some, if there's some extra there, we can transfer some of that, you know. Down into overtime to help out with that.
Okay.
You know, uh.
I'll live everything I can.
You know.
We budgeted, we find, we just eaten into that.
Yeah.
Almost all.
Yeah, we've been through.
We went through it, uh one of the things we ran into. Challenge we ran into, and once the approval was made on, you know, how the salary was set up, we were still, at that time, still. Too late getting the paramedic spots. Uh one of the things we found that we were originally told that. They're on Facebook, or we can advertise it through the state website, we were not getting any bites from that. So we changed and we went to like ZipRecruiter and those companies, that's where we were able to find a few uh. Paramedics applied, and we were able to interview them, they're working as we speak. Uh the one thing we ran into. Well, up to last week or week before, none of them was really interested in the twelve hour rotation, uh. But I had been told there may be a medic out there that might be interested in the twelve hour position, but they're not putting application in. We may have to come back and reconsider, look at that differently, may have to fill it, two E M Ts possibly. But we're we're kinda seeing how things play out now. So, but we definitely got the two twenty part, which helped a lot. Because they were not filled, we were filling, a lot of the full timers were filling in for that, which we had to have those spots filled, as I told you guys, we needed. And of course, you know, the one, the challenge we ran into is the ones that were filmed, that will get in a lot of extra overtime, which they have my overtime budget. But now that we've got some people in there, it won't be as, you're still gonna have overtime, but not as bad. And we need those, even those spots.
Yes, Dudley. Did you have something to add, Dudley?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Gar, what's this six hundred and seventy-two hours total overtime hour, I missed that at the beginning.
So, basically, we have twenty-one pays left right now, as of, as of today, basically. The way I go in, I figure out, we have fourteen pays where the the crew will work one week, seventy-two hours. Well, that's three, three days, and the next week they'll work two days. So when you figure that out, that's forty hours of overtime and a pay period. So there's fourteen of those pays, we'll have forty hours of overtime. And then there's seven pays, where they'll have, one week they'll work forty-eight hours, and the next week they work forty-eight hours. Figure that out, that's sixteen hours of overtime in a pay period. So when you figure that out, fourteen times forty is five hundred and sixty, and then your seven times sixteen is a hundred and twelve. And you add those together, that's six hundred and seventy-two hours of projected overtime. Now, gotta take into consideration, I have a lot of individuals that have a lot of accrued time, you know, available. Because of the way we pay now hourly rate, they take a day off, they get their straight hourly pay for that. So I'm inclined to thinking that people are gonna utilize more of their own vacation time, because now they're basically getting paid. For their vacation, whereas before, on that fixed salary fluctuating hours that we were doing previously, it was figured in your salary. So you, you didn't see that money, it was starting there, it already started, yeah.
How many, how many positions do you have left filled, and?
Two.
Just two.
Yeah. Just two paramedics, yes, but then that's the twelve hour truck, which is that, oh, that fourth ambulance, that fourth truck we asked for. So that's why I come up with the six hundred and seventy-two hour, and then if you go down.
Projected, if they.
Projected, if they, that's if they don't take any time off, but I think you have to figure how and that, just so that you can cover it. And then if it's the end of the year, we don't need it, it's gonna come back.
So dollars, they gotta make sure the dollars are there to get that six seventy-two.
That'll come back to us if it's used, and and that's kept tracked by our secretary.
I track it.
You you track it?
Jeff and I track it.
So we gotta got taken a vacation day or a time off, and then we gotta have somebody filter through that overtime.
Yes.
And that's six seventy-two.
Right.
Okay, got it.
And usually typical what happens is, up to this point, it still is, is some of the full-time people will pick up those days. Uh just for the fact that we were. Our part-time is several different, it's kinda, gotta call PRN, basically as per needed, you know, because this week, we may have. Four shifts open, but next week we may have nine. So, you know, it's as per needed, but we are in the process of bringing on more of our time individuals, will help a little bit with that.
Um I noticed that we've got the new helicopter cars.
Yes.
Here, so Indiana needs a helicopter car. If you're not familiar with. What that is, that is your air ambulance service that the county offers to all of the residents in Fountain County, so.
You need some more out of the whole box back in session.
Please pick one up, if you need one, Carol.
Do they have stickers you can put on the car windows?
You could put your own sticker on there, pardon me.
You could put your own sticker on there, put it in your car somewhere.
They never gave us any this time.
Well, I got one.
Yeah, I don't, are you now, did you get one? Are you a a national member, or are you just, just a member through this, through this, okay? I ended up, it was a difference between the national member or that.
She made the extra.
You made the extra?
We made it up.
Okay, she does not.
For those in the audience, if you are not familiar with that, you can then.
Yeah. So, we, the county has uh purchased into what they call a membership. Uh program through P H I, uh Statlight, it's a helicopter service, uh. What basically is, is if, for whatever reason, um you are needed to be transported by air medical. To a higher level of care, you know, Indianapolis, Champaign, or you know, anywhere like that. And we utilize Statlight, which is P H I, to come in and pick you up. You know, and fly you to say Indianapolis, uh there obviously, there's a charge for that. What they will do is they will um charge your insurance, and then whatever the insurance pays, or if there's a balance. That balance will be written off.
So the flight is nothing to you?
Yes. And it, that what includes is any, anything in Fountain County and any adjacent counties to us. So whatever joins to us, if you are in that county, so like, if you were in Outmark County at the state park, and something happens and they use Statlight. Or P H I to fly, that would work for you. If you get anywhere outside of the adjacent counties, then it does not work, but you can purchase the national membership, which then. You can be anywhere in the nation, but there's Statlight.
And do, and do we know how much that is?
I think it's thirty-five.
There are papers on the desk out here in the auditor's office.
Yes.
And it's only thirty-five bucks.
Yeah, I think it's thirty-five bucks.
Yeah.
And the beauty of it is, the way I understand it, is that we sit between two locations where Statlight is located, one in Putnam County, one at Purdue University, so. Um we're forced into living in this area.
So, we'll, 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 they're advantage, like, cost, I believe, probably.
Well, I mean, they're probably about the forty to fifty right now, okay?
We took two of those ambulance drives to Indianapolis, six months apart, they were over seventy grand each. And insurance covered none of it, only covered ground.
Oh, no.
Yeah, which, did you buy, did you buy a Statlight then?
Yep. Yep.
Before this.
Before, okay, I remember.
Okay.
I recognize your face now.
Yeah, that's before we had it.
Yes, I think we're in our second year, aren't we? Now, we're third.
So I think we're in our third.
Third, yeah.
But our account hasn't changed, the account number and the cards are the same, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and one thing you can is, it's nice to have a guard, but I will tell you that what they will do is they will go back and look at your address. And if your address is in Fountain County, they will go all of that too, so I mean, there's two options there too.
Well, Garth, you got anything else for us?
The only thing I had was, I said to you, uh, just a little bit about, we're looking at wanting to. Further, uh, some career opportunities, I sent you some information on that, but we've talked about this before. Little bit, I have some individuals within my department that would like to move on and their certification. Uh, they're a ba- they're basically EMTs right now, uh, they would like to move on to advanced EMT. Uh, I think it would be a bit, bit to us, uh. For a lot of reasons, uh, you know, with the shortage of paramedics, right now, not done what we're doing, okay? But we all know how that can change for liquid. Um, so with being able to get the individuals trained to the advanced level. Uh, would help a lot, and, um, if we have paramedics step away if something happens. And they can still provide ALS care, not quite as much as the paramedic, but it will help a lot. Um, and, you know, obviously, you know, uh. If they were partnered with a paramedic, for example, uh, if the medic takes the day off, it helps a lot easier. You know, when I'm trying to find another paramedic to fill that spot, we can utilize a regular basic EMT. Which in turn is a little bit more reasonable, uh. Upfront costs, you know, where I'm going with this is, is it's about a six to seven month class. Let me back up a little bit, six to seven months. We would like to get this started, we projected, we'd like to start in May. Uh, push it out, we're into October, somewhere in there when we're completed, give or take. Uh, by the time they get through their testing and all that, uh, and then they have to do certain precept time with us before the release. We're almost to the end of the year. So what I'm looking at is, is I wouldn't really put the financial side until twenty twenty-five budget. Uh, as I, I, I explained to you guys in the email. But I would like to have, basically, you guys blessing for us to move forward with it, uh, upfront costs. You're probably looking at an additional. Fifteen, twenty thousand dollars extra per person. Upfront, but long-term down the road, I think it will pay itself off, um. Because it will help us be that much personal. And we've talked about education before here, about what we'd like to do, and and obviously things have changed with our payroll, but. I think we still need to continue to look in the future. Uh, you know, EMS and continue to advance our certifications and life surgery.
If, I got a question, I don't know if this is even possible, but you know, some. Uh, hospitals offer nurses school as long as you have signed contract for two or three years, is this a thing that you can do?
Yes, we can, we, we have done that in the past, uh, in the times that I. Uh, and Josh can attest this, we, when we went through our first intermediate, which is basically the advanced class. We signed a two-year contract then, and when we went for our paramedic class back in two thousand eleven, twelve, thirteen. We signed a two-year contract also, so yes, we, we, we can definitely have that two-year contract. Where they sign, once they've completed, they're with us for two years.
And we teach you that our place.
We can, yes, that's one advantage we can have with the advanced EMT, we are, we can teach it there. Um, the one class that we cannot teach there is paramedic. Because it has to be accredited, it's a little different, uh, with the advanced EMT, we can.
How you get accredited?
Uh, a lot of money, a lot of hitting.
Oh, you're accredited, I know you're.
I'm not accredited.
You're not yet?
No, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of hoops to jump through. Uh, you gotta have a sponsoring hospital, you gotta have a, a college, you know, behind you to. But then it's basically what it does is it allows them to be able to go on and get a degree. You know, like associate's level on a paramedic. And it's just, it's very expensive.
I don't know, Dudley, can you hear me?
What do you think, Dudley, what's your thoughts?
I.
Well.
Go ahead.
I haven't been able to get an email, so I, I have not seen Garth's proposal.
Okay.
And I would kinda like to have all seven present when we, uh, make a decision on that, but. Also, I'd like to, to read it and, and see exactly what it entails and the total cost of it. Before I, I, I can make a commitment on it.
Definitely, I can bring it back in April, I just kinda wanted to bring you aware of what we're trying to do.
Uh, one thing I'm gonna bring up too is I went to the ambulance department last week, ten days ago. They're gonna be looking at new monitors possibly, we got, what do you say, a couple of them?
Monitors, COTS.
COTS. So these are things he's gonna look towards when he does his budget time, so.
There's a program out there right now that I'd like to have a few of you come in and just sit down and listen to it and see before we bring it. If you guys feel, excuse me, if we need to bring the full council, full commissioners, it's a program through Stryker, it's called ALS three sixty. Um, it's kind of a, it's that, you call it a master plan. So what they do is they look at all your equipment, and what they do is they come in. Replace certain pieces of equipment every year, and what it creates is for every two years, however you set it up. And what this does is, there's a flat fee you pay per year. And, uh, what that does is actually locked into that. So, uh, you don't have to worry about the cost, everything goes up about three to five percent every year. So if I bought a COT, for example, this year for twenty-five thousand dollars. And then we decided to come back in two years by another one, you're figuring another five, five percent or more on that. Whereas what this program keeps locked over a period of time.
On those COTS, if, are there expiration dates on those COTS?
Ten years. They say the manufacturer says ten years.
And if we trade those in for millions, do we get any credit for those?
We get some, I don't know what the number will be, that would be something we'd have to ask that, that representative, when, if we, I would like to bring him in. He came in and presented to us, uh, at the time, I didn't know that it fit, but I'm not sure that with everything going up right now. Uh, I can get a quote today, it's only good for thirty days. And that's what's going across the industry right now. It's unfortunate, I think, the industry is volatile right now, uh, they don't see it really leveling out till twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
We're pretty close on our COTS because we bought those new about eight years.
I got three right now that are ten years.
I don't say.
And I got one at sixteen, and then I've got one at twenty twenty.
And how much are those COTS to use that?
I think we're pushing between twenty-five and thirty now, I don't know, I can't tell you off the top of my head. Monitors are at fifty, I think they're, they're posted fifty grand for a new monitor.
And when you say monitor, what kind of picture?
So it's a, it's, it's a monitor to figure later, so basically what we are able to do with it is we're able to. Place the leads on a patient and actually see the rhythm, we can actually take blood pressure with it. Do twelve lead, which is an E, an DPG, we can disfigure late patients. We can, if they're in a bad lethal rhythm, we can cardiovert them.
Is that the one that talks to you? Yeah.
Somewhat, yeah.
Almost like a AD.
Yeah, play this a little more specific.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, make sure.
Where do we stand on the new ambulances?
That was next thing I remember, thanks, Dudley. Um, but anyway, we'll table the advanced side of it, and I like to get with you guys on that ALS three sixty thing to.
What else, of course, I do have one other, you know, on this contract, if you complete that, you know, we had that before a few years ago. And if they didn't complete that contract, did they have to pay back any of that stuff? Did they pay back?
Everybody stayed, we had nobody not stay, everybody stayed their two years.
And the other thing I'm really interested in is, if we can do there. I think it's a big plus for us.
And we can. When we're able to do that, lots there, we're, we're doing EMT classes, you know, uh, we're, we are affiliated under Benton County. It's our training institution, their institution is set up where they can do advanced EMT classes, so we're able to do those.
Are we okay now, if there's a problem along the highway, uh, on summer? That we actually can go straight to the hospital, we're not stopping anywhere. Picking up anybody else that can do this type of work, I think we're okay with.
For the most part, but we still, there's still that chance, uh, you know, there's still the chance that, you know. Sometimes just depend on staffing and what's available. Uh, you know, our fourth ambulance that we bring on, that we brought on. We're able sometimes put advanced provider with it, predominantly it's two EMTs, so depending on. Type of call it is, they may have to stop and, you know, pick up a paramedic, you know, for assist. Uh, depending on staffing, you know, if there's not paramedics available or advanced EMT is not available. Then we have to fill it, you know, with another EMT. So there's times that either we'll pull or utilize a, a advanced. Provider, either a paramedic or advanced EMT within our organization, or we'll have to reach for outside agency, but. It's not a lot, but we still do.
That went through my mind the other day when you said four or five positions, advanced EMTs, and you've got somebody all the time with you.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
Advanced EMT, for the most of our calls, advanced EMT can, can perform. Maybe there's gonna be some cases that they're not gonna be able to, but for the most part, they're gonna be able to t- provide the way they need to provide and not have to pay. For a, a higher level of, you know, care.
So where are we at on the ambulances?
So I just got a text back from him today, just this morning, uh, I'm supposed to look into last week, did not, uh, it sounds like May. Uh, it's one of the, the two from Horton. He said they're trying to push it to where it is earlier, but right now it's showing May. Now, when in May, we don't know, it just says May.
What about the? Do we have a balance?
The remount, once we were delivered, once we get delivery of the two and get them in service, then we will send that one.
That's right.
To have a remount, and that one will probably take sixty to ninety days. So, Colleen, I don't know, we probably, uh, I, I don't know what your thoughts are, we probably need to add that. In, but what I'm asking to for now, and have that already studied or waiting.
The ambulance will be delivered to Fountain County in May, possibly, okay.
So we wanna, do you want me to put that additional in on Monday too, just to have it there, because you talked about having it early?
When will the payment be due?
Um, it's exactly, it's how you delivery, but I mean, I'm sure that if we're not right at the time, I'm pretty sure he'll work with us on that. But usually on delivery, when the payment will be due.
Okay, so if you've got a, an additional you're advertising for, Colleen, you might as well go ahead and advertise for the ambulances. That way we won't wait.
Okay. I'll put something together, Colleen, I'll give that to you also.
Okay.
For Monday. So May is what it sounds like, he's, he did send me a text, he's hoping it may be earlier than that, but I don't know how much earlier, I. It could be in April, but I'm gonna say May.
Okay, thanks.
How, you'll, you'll let me know how much?
Yeah, I, I got the numbers, so I'll give you those, I'll put it in a letter and I'll give it to you. Along with the other amount that we're asking for, along with the timing.
What's the difference between a rebound and ambulance as far as wants?
Basically, rebound is, is they just remove, they lift the box off of what we have now and. Uh, put a new chassis underneath, under it, you know, uh, and then they'll actually go through the box, they'll go through all the wiring. The upholstery, all that, make sure that it's all up to date.
What's the fee on this, this doll?
Um, that one committed two hundred sixty-five thousand on a rebound.
Thank you, Garth.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Dana?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have a couple of things, I wanna let you know that the hard drive for Caliber is open in the twenty-six through the twenty-eighth, though. Going to be here to install it. Um, they are implementing changes as we speak from the old to the new, which is what we now operate then.
Good.
Um, I do have, so, for what we do, everything's recorded. So as soon as you hit that button, or you hit that button to call out and call in, nine one one or admin, it's recorded. So we go through Equi- Equiture to do that, so as of right now, it's coming. The contract is coming due, so they have upgraded and new installations are going to be, need to be made. Um. There's a one-to-one fee of three thousand dollars. And with the new equipment and the new process that we have, it will up it. For the next year, so it went from four thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars a year to six thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Plus the three thousand dollars for the installation. So I did not budget for that, but I do have a, um. Entity here that I can take out of, at the same and put into our repair maintenance from. From that, so that I can just move money around, no money is going to be passed, why just move it around. So what I did opt for is I opted for the same program that we have. I opted out of the translation, which is another six thousand five hundred dollars, I don't believe that right now. Um, maybe in the future, when calls and work is different, but right now I opted out for that, so. I wanted to touch base with you, so the extra would be like five thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents of what it would be to transfer from one. Account for another. And now a budget extra for what's needed for the, for our recording. So we use that, officers use that, EMS uses that, fire uses that, it's a, it's a necessity, that's the other. That's what I have.
Any questions for Dana?
Go on.
Uh, no, I don't, thank you, I'm sorry.
Dudley, do you have anything for Dana?
Nope, that sounds good, what she said.
All right, I guess have a great day.
Who else doing that back in the back, that I can't see? Mister Lewis.
Yeah.
Mister Lewis.
Hey, I just wanted you guys to know on, uh, Bridge two oh two in Stone Bluff, we're still moving forward to the federal. Federally funded aspect of it, um. And Bridge sixty-six down by the shop, that is still moving forward, I will have to get. A beam replaced, a section of a beam replaced on that bridge prior to work being done on it. Um, that bridge is not set to let in until twenty twenty-eight, so we have the. Failure structure on that, so, but it's no big deal, I'm, I'm getting a price on that, so, um, also. Just to let you guys know, the biolytic software is working great, and I've been contacted by. Three counties that are actually looking into this.
Yes.
Um, and Slaver Rush that was here that presented this to us, um. He is actually talking to LTAP, and in April, they're having a conference up at Purdue. That he's wanting to speak now about AI-generated inspections, so, um. People are looking at it, so I, I'm just, I'm really happy that we were able to spend money on it and, and.
You don't.
Yeah, so.
Good deal.
Um, other than that, I don't know if you guys will wait until April, if you want to talk about that, it's completely.
I think, yeah. When are they coming to with you?
April three.
April three.
August four, uh.
On the salary.
You're a little employee, or you can talk about it now.
Well, we got three other people not here, I haven't, I kinda hit and miss with it a little bit, or what, what you had. So I don't know, Dudley, one away, or you know, what do you guys want to do?
Yes, I, I think it'd be a good idea to have the presentation in April when everyone's here. I emailed Josh and asked him if that would be fine if we went to April, so everyone can have a chance to look it over and we can discuss it.
I agree. Um, where are we at on chip seal and paving?
Okay, so we're gonna start paving, uh, seven thirty east. Which is just outside of Hillsboro. Uh, we'll be doing that hopefully the second week of May. Uh, and when we go over to Bone Break Road on the east side of forty-one, it's about three miles, so we'll be doing that. And then after we get paving done, we'll start jumping onto our chip seal, which is going to be about forty miles this year. I'm, I'm down three, three guys, which was when they actually, so. I, I lost my distributor operator, the tank truck driver, um, so.
And that's a true to.
Yes. Um, but I've got a couple of people that's coming in for interviews. Thursday, I've got a couple more, but I can go Friday. But being down, we're gonna have some new guys to train. Uh, we were gonna shoot for sixty. Sixty miles, but I just think do better back on, just, and that goes along with getting the aggregate too.
Better film with your boots on, Ray.
But that's what we're looking for. We have, um. We have not been awarded our community license grant yet. We're straight down the road. That should be probably towards the end of the month or the beginning of April. Um, and we'll start. It's one point five million. The county's match would be happening. Um, but we have like thirteen colors probably replacing all that section of the road, so. That's coming from Covington to, uh. Eight forty south.
Mm-hmm.
It's about nine miles, ten miles.
That's it. You haven't bid that out yet, have you?
No, we haven't been awarded the, the grant yet, so as soon as we get it forwarded, uh, we'll have the bid process and.
Perfect.
Do that. So we, it may be October, again, before you start on, depending on who's scheduled, who gets it, your schedule. Um, so we have, I think we have plenty of time.
But it's on this end of the.
Yes. So, it's going on.
Okay. Are you gonna use the same dust control then?
Yes.
Greatly, yes.
Dust control, um, people, if they want, um, so what, what? What all their dust control with that.
Brenda, did you have that on your?
Yeah.
Yeah, what do you think that?
It's the, um, if, if it doesn't rain, it doesn't hold that.
Yeah, we haven't had more.
So that can be a problem. But when it, when they first, uh, put it on our route, um, it was immediate. You know, of course, people just fly by my house and it's, it's, it's a road. Uh, yeah, they get on there and nothing and then. It does, you know, but it doesn't rain for quite some time.
Yeah.
It's, it's like they didn't put anything on front of us.
So if, if you get that application, it will flash into our sheet.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, we have, we have an application there. It has possibly miles just for us to keep track of.
Okay.
Where there are some, keep your readers off of.
Okay.
Um, and then you'll just contact Great Lakes Florida and set up, you'll do all your transactions.
The citizens, the citizens make the contract greatly.
Yes.
Contact greatly.
Yes, yeah. But we would ask that they come in, fill out the application and give them their contact information.
Okay.
How they know nothing, right, Dana?
We've asked the, we've asked, that's what the applications are for. And we've asked the homeowners to put out supplies, it's something that we know from here to here, don't touch it.
So. The lady told me the other day, she said, I had that done, we were talking about, she said, we had that done and they came along and granted it this. That was money out of their pocket, they didn't get advantage of.
Yeah, no, no, that's the only application. It states that we, if it starts getting rough or at the end of the season. We, we have the ability to, to do that. So.
Anything else on the process?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Have a good day, Al.
Oh, Carlos, I will be at Rose School tomorrow through February six.
Okay, perfect. I'll, I'll give you, um, when I can do my business. Okay, thanks, Jason. Is the sheriff back there?
No.
Mister Whittington?
Um, brief interview report for twenty-three, um, thirty-five scene calls, free phone consults. Card backfiller disease remains the number one killer in County, just like it does all the protection in the world. If you're fifty, go buy your forty-nine dollar car scan, especially if you're not going to the doctor. Um, just tell people that, you know, Ascension does it, Franciscan does it, it's forty-nine bucks no matter where you go. Um, there, there's a lot of information that you're gonna need for that. Um, trauma death and suicide death are on the rise. They, last year we had higher trauma and suicide deaths than we've had in a while, even though our scene call numbers have been down. Um, and our, what I call acuity, our acuity is higher on a lot of these cases last year. Um, there were a lot more involved, a lot more time on scene, and then a lot more to follow. Yes, man?
Oh, I'm scratching my.
So, sorry, I just. The ambulance response times have been so good lately and. Uh, fentanyl and, and heroin are kind of down here right now. It's more meth stuff. And we just don't see as many meth overdoses as we do with, you know, meth doesn't make you stop breathing. Heroin and fentanyl make you stop breathing, so, yeah, the drug overdoses are, are low.
How you getting along with her being out? It's good? Clean, no damage?
Well stocked. I got, I mean, I got ten body bags in there, everybody's ready.
Ready to go.
And again, you guys are running, you're all gonna give me a ball and just. Hey, I want a little bit of this week. Not, not only to ride in the van, I mean.
So basically you want to take us for a ride.
But otherwise, all will, um, thank you.
No, thank you. Have a good day. Anyone else back there, Gar? Okay.
I wouldn't have granted anything terrible, and if we, we've kind of been investing. We have not done anything, we have invested in our employees. Uh, we have invested in the ambulance employees, the sheriff, and now, uh, working on the highway. That's dollars of, uh, increase. So just want to make you aware, we are, we are doing some of that with the money. And I guess the best thing we can do with our money is invest in our employees, you get the best. So just be aware of that in, in some things that we're trying to do.
Yeah, I think they're being very responsible with our budget.
That's.
I appreciate that.
That's why I wanted to.
I just, I would just like some answers to some of the big.
Sure.
Right, that's what I'm asking for. I know.
Yeah.
You guys are doing a great job.
But I just want you to know, dude, we spend a lot of money in the budget. Maybe they don't advise some employees that they're worth it.
Well, yeah. Especially today, since we're all men, it's hard to get people to go to work, you know?
Yeah.
You want to keep, and then we, and the problem we end up with is we lose them to Montgomery County, a lot of towns. Or other counties, so I want to keep.
Our good employees too.
Yes.
Uh, we're sure. We have several that have been for the county several years and we, we want that to continue. I appreciate the council, you know, addressing it finally, because it's been going on for years. No one's really took all.
I, my, my point though is it can affect some decisions, I'm trying to influence the budget. Just. Correct?
Correct. Dudley, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, I, but I agree with Jeff. We've got to take care of our employees first before we, uh, look at capital projects and. And we're gonna have to look at our money very closely, especially after the report that Jason gave us. On where our money's coming from before we make any big decisions.
Hey, does anyone have anything else? Okay, with that, I get a motion to close the, oh, actually, let me back up. Next meeting Monday, April fifteenth. Uh, nine AM. We'll see everybody here on that day. Uh, and I get one, one's the meeting.
You go ahead.
Tom? Second? Jenna?
Hey, wait a minute. Sorry, did you say, did you say April fifteenth or April eighth?
April fifteenth.
April eighth. April eighth is second Monday.
It's right.
April eighth.
Okay.
Hey, where are you at? Where are you at?
A long ways away, I can tell you.
More specific or not? Yes?
Oh, yeah, we are going to be closed on the eighth, so the meeting will be on the ninth.
Okay. Okay, Monday, April ninth.
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday, April ninth.
Tuesday, April ninth.
What, we told you for what?
Okay, so Tuesday, April ninth at nine AM is our next meeting. Let's vote. Yeah.
Two, three, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Yes, that's five oh. Thank you, everyone, for coming to this wonderful meeting.
By the way, Dudley, we just gotta ask you, are you on the beach?
No, I'm out in the middle of the ocean.
Oh. Have a good night, Dudley.
Okay.